Okay, first item on tonight's work session agenda will be a discussion of the Community Development Department, the HR Director, Leslie Green. Leslie?
How are you guys doing this afternoon?
Good.
Good. Um, so, as you know, Sherri Lee, Bloodworth Botop, is leaving, and we have been looking at the position for community development, and, um, we have actually decided to, um, look at her position in a couple different ways.
I could explain that more.
Go ahead.
You can explain the grade and the, um, well, um, basically, just like in Planning Department restructure, we're losing an important person that is handling a lot of projects, and I'm trying to think about the next 18 months, and if we can hire two people for the same price by restructuring a little bit internally, then that's what I proposed. It's going to be a supervisor, which, it's really taking almost everything that Sherri Lee was doing. I mean, it will be a long schedule, I mean, it's a salary position, but it's going to be a long schedule. I had a presentation that I could show with all the projects that are in the works, even when I saw it and it was presented, I was just blown away. I knew about all of them, but when you put them in the entirety, you can see that every department has so much going on, and the person that's intricately involved in every project is that director. So, hiring a supervisor and a coordinator that would help with some of the managing of the grants and projects for, um, there's lots that we have grants for right now, but including restore funds, all of which, those projects will start, one by the end of the summer, and the other two probably by the end of the year. So, you know, I looked at this as, within this budget, how can we get the most bang for our buck? And I sent all of y'all, you know, the details on that. The difference in the structure I showed you was like $447, so it's not much, but again, thinking about the next 18 months.
Back to Leslie now.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to know more about the positions and their grades.
Yeah, um, well, we looked at where these positions would be internally and externally, within the rest of the City of Fairhope employees, and with, of course, the outside world. Um, I have, uh, I have our, our pay grade sheet, if you would like to see it, where it would match up to that, if that would help you. And, um, we, uh, we agreed upon the, uh, the salaries notated, the pay grades notated on the job descriptions. If you need any further explanation with that.
Have you got a, I mean, a breakdown of, I mean, this is the pay grades, have you got a breakdown of the cost, of what the salaries are being proposed to be?
I, I sent that to everybody, and...
You say, but it would be two additions and a reclassification is a 400, 400 something dollar difference?
Okay. Well, Lisa said she, okay. Basically, would, it would be a promotion, a replacement, and a new hire.
Promotion, replacement, and a new hire. I don't, I don't see the numbers in here. You said there was a 400 and something dollar difference in that?
Right.
Yeah, Jack, it was in the email the mayor sent to us.
And then Lisa also sent.
Did that include, was that $437 inclusive of benefits?
This is all about, it's, the same benefits would match the $400. We're not doing anything different for these people than, you know, if, if the salary's the same, the benefits are the same.
Right, but you'd be, you would be, Jack, ten...
Two additional benefits packages, right?
No, it'd just be one, because there are, it'd be taking three employees and making it four.
Okay, that's the same.
Well...
And so, there would be, there would be, that there'd be $442 difference in salary, but there would be one additional benefit package.
One difference.
Right. Which now, it's just single, and if they want to pay for family, they pay. So, it's not the expense it used to be.
Counsel, do you have any questions to Mayor or staff on this?
Yeah, looking under the basic purpose of the position, it says to develop and conduct public relations and public informational programs.
That was in the other one, too. I mean, it's basically taking, regardless of what that job description says, I can tell you right now, this person's going to be a lot, doing a lot more than what's defined there. I mean, if I spelled out everything that Sherri Lee did, it would be 100 pages. I mean, this person's hands is in everything to help in a collaborative way with every single project that's happening. We want to make sure that when something is happening in public works, that all other departments are working together at that same time for those same, same things. I mean, it's a complex, uh, position.
Any other questions, Counsel? I had a question, one more question. You said that I'm trying to get through the next 18 months. Why not look beyond the next 18?
I, I would, but right now, I'm just trying to keep within budget.
Okay. I would, I mean, if, if we, if we create these positions, and then you want to go back to a Community Affairs Director, um, are we gonna, are we gonna be going back to another?
I'm not planning on doing anything major the next 18 months. All I want to do is be able to finish what we've started, as much as we can over the next 18 months. I mean, that, the department has been requesting, in their budget, help every single year, and every time, it's been cut. You can't expect one person to do what she did for the last two and a half years. You just can't. You know, oh, well, we hired her, she can do that. We, I mean, you can't do that. This is a, Economic and Community Development is a critical department for the city, especially a city that has grown 44% since 2010. And this seems to be a defined department with a lot more help, because every bit of money you invest in this department is paid back tenfold. Right now, I'm just trying to get in what I'm used to getting approved, which is keeping things the same.
You mentioned grant writing. I know Sherri Lee's been involved. Is she actually writing the grants, or is...
She, she handles most of all the grants. And, and, um, we have Stacy on contract, and she helps, helps a lot, too, but she, she doesn't work for, she's not an employee of the city.
Right.
She just helps, you know, facilitate some of it, and we have a very good deal with her. But, we, we have more grants going on right now than in Fairhope history. And one person's pretty much juggling all of that, and Richard Johnson, don't want to give a, congratulations to you, thank you, Richard. But, I mean, we're doing it on a slim staff as it is. I mean, her position, aside from helping with $18 million in restore funds, just all the, the extra, and you might have to update me on that, is in excess of $2 million. I mean, in the big picture, this is paying off beautifully. That's why we need more help, because when you have that, it just increases it more.
Any, any comments, Counsel? Any more questions? Any more hires? I'd like to go back to my, my budget book, and, I mean, we've added, you know, tens of new positions in the city. Um, I would probably say dozens. I'd like to see, you know, what, you know, you say that we've added, added no new people in this department. I can't argue with you right now about that, because I don't have all of the information right at my fingertips, but I would say that that department has grown. I just, I don't know, just for me personally, I'd like to take a look at how much has grown.
I will tell you that I tried to add, Sherri Lee gave a generous one-month's notice. Guess when her last day is? Friday. I had been trying to get this on a work session and council agenda since the end of April. When I texted you, Councilman, you said that on the night, sorry, you missed the deadline. I mean, this is such an easy thing to fix and move forward in an efficient way, but now, look, we won't even have a prospect until after she leaves. I mean, that's ridiculous.
And I'll just say that, um, I did have some issue and some disagreement with this, and I discussed that with the mayor today, and even though I, I still don't think she and I are on the same page, uh, I do agree with her that, whether I agree with it or not, it's, if it is a mistake, it is her mistake to make, and we can see how it goes, and if it doesn't work, then we can fix it.
Okay. Anybody else?
And that's why I wanted y'all to, to call me when I emailed this specifically. In the subject line, it says, "Please call me. This is important," and that was May 23rd. I mean, you know, if we can discuss any of your concerns, that also makes it a little bit easier process.
Anybody else want to move this forward?
Would have to be on the next agenda, wouldn't it?
What?
Put it on the next agenda?
It needs to be on this agenda.
Well, if, if two of you want it on the next agenda, it can go on the next agenda. If you want to put it on tonight's agenda, and we're going to walk it on, I can tell you that I'm going to vote no, so it's not going to go on there. Have we had the Personnel Board look at these job descriptions? And have they been...
You didn't have the Personnel Board look at the planning positions. It's all a matter of time-sensitive, critical needs. This is the very least we need. When you have, like, what, $22 million worth of grants in the works right now, I mean, why are we penny-pinching on that? That's a lot of money.
Well, to, to be fair, the, the person that you are considering for Sherri Lee, or this, not Sherri Lee's position, would be this new position, is already on staff and can, can kind of see this through until the position becomes permanent, though. So, it's not like it's just going to be left to breeze.
No, this is, I mean, if you, if you will, this is very, very important.
Yeah, I was...
A lot more important than a lot of things that are on the agenda tonight. I would like, I mean, some of the department heads to speak to the critical need to move this forward now. We've already wasted three weeks, because you're unwillingness to add it.
I have to deny this one minute, but if you, if you got it to me like, you got it to me like, Mayor, I haven't denied this.
I hate to put you on the spot, Lisa, but have I been requesting this since beginning of the month?
Work session agenda.
Okay.
We barely had any room at all to, to get through what we had, and I even asked you in a prior agenda to put something under your comments, because we have a finite amount of time in the work session. We don't have a finite amount of time in the council meeting, so I actually, to, to do you a favor, move something to your comments so that we could get to it. And, you know, it's not always easy to juggle what we had. I had, uh, Councilman Conyers, as he stated, he had had something he wanted on the last agenda, talked about the mayor's salary that he's been asking for, for months to, to get on there.
And that, that kicked off my, my six-month budget review, which I had also planned several different times.
That's what I was saying, I asked you to do it on the...
You didn't ask me.
Council meeting.
You didn't ask me.
Well, I moved it to that, so you could...
I know that, you moved it. You didn't ask me.
There was nowhere for it to go, Mayor.
I know, it's, it's not something I would ever spend 30 minutes with an update during my mayor report. I mean, that's...
Yeah, council members, if somebody wants to make the motion to...
Well, let me, let me say this. Being the liaison for the Personnel Board, it would be nice, Sherri Lee turned in her notice three, three weeks ago. We haven't received, the Personnel Board hasn't received any information that you were going to give, and that's the way it should go through, is what your recommendations is to do.
They can't meet until tomorrow.
Uh, hang on, it doesn't matter when they can meet. That's the way it should be done. It should be done with the fact, they can call a special meeting if, if they have to, but they need to look at it, read it, and I'm going to assure you that I will, until they look at it and see it and advise us what we need to do, I will vote no. Because that's the method we need to take, and we not only need to...
I asked them that they couldn't meet.
...against the Personnel Board, it's left out completely.
Well, that's because we actually do have experience in-house, and when they can't meet, well, I tried to get them to meet on this, they can't meet until after this meeting. That means we have to wait until the next council meeting?
This could have been done three weeks ago. Soon as she, soon as she, uh, put the resignation in, you came up with this plan and wanted to get this thing started, which you could have started with the Personnel Board.
I wanted to first discuss with y'all what the plan was, and nobody wanted to discuss it or call me back on it. I mean, it's, I know it's hard for us to meet, but this would have taken a five-minute conversation, if you looked at the email that I sent you with all the detail.
I, I understand that, but again, that's why we have a Personnel Board, until we start using them, the vote's going to be...
I tried to, so...
On my point. I just don't agree with why, that's why you don't want to use them.
That is, it went to them, and they can't meet.
No, it did not, this survey has not gone the Personnel Board.
Yes, I did. It has. And they can't meet until after this meeting. They were down to three people right now until y'all approved the other two. It's, it's hard to get them to, to turn around, like, but having that process as part of hiring is really, and I've said this many times, it is inefficient, and we want lots of help, but when it stagnates the process for weeks, the city can't afford that.
If the City Council wants advice from professionals, and we, and we often do, we seek advice from, and in this, in this cases, when we have new job descriptions, new pay grades, we ask them to look it over and bless it, uh, and then, and come back to us, you know, with a recommendation of whether or not they think that, and they can't decide whether or not we need to fill them and fund them, but they can say whether or not, you know, the position makes sense and...
Who needs the Personnel Board meeting?
The third.
The third? Okay, um, I recommend that we do a special council meeting, then. I mean, I, this is urgent.
Everything's not, and everything's not in emergency, and you...
An easement sure is.
You could call that, but I mean, and everybody had two councils...
A conservation easement.
...already said that we want to put it on the next agenda, and it can go on the next agenda. But it won't go on tonight, uh, because I, for one, will, will vote against it, and all it takes is one vote to go on the agenda tonight, so there's no sense in not pushing it to tonight. It's just not an emergency. And if we're only adding one person, we have two people, one's going to be promoted, as Jay pointed out, one's going to be...
That has to be approved by council first. None of this can happen until y'all approve it.
Mayor, you know as well as I do and everybody else at this table that you put people where they want to be. It doesn't matter what the job descriptions are, and I mean, we've been doing that for years.
That's because we all do a lot more than what their job descriptions are.
We're going to address that later tonight, too. Anyway, so, Counsel, I have two of you wanting on the next agenda, so...
I don't want it on the agenda until the Personnel Board has had a chance to look at it, review it, and give their recommendation, period.
Would y'all be willing to do a special council meeting, then?
That, I have no problem with, but until they look at it and have time, and have time to look at it and review it, and give us their recommendation, my vote will be no.
Councilman Brown, would you do a special meeting then after they meet?
They meet on the third?
Yeah.
If they're meeting on the third.
So, well, now, that doesn't give them enough, maybe not give them enough time to look at this.
Well, it's already been sent, and I, I will send it to the, to new people, and...
Again, I have to disagree with you. Nobody in the Personnel Board has seen it or looked at it. Don't ask me why they hasn't, but it's not...
I asked Gail to send it, and I know I sent something. Hmm? No, no, yeah, it wasn't just that. Before the nominations, it was this request.
All right. Let's move on. I think a special meeting could be considered, after with, you know, a recommendation from the Personnel Board, with date TBD. Let's move on to discussion of decals for construction vehicles at work sites.
Oh.
I'm going to give each of you one of these. So, let's see. I'd sent you something a while back. I've kind of updated it, I've done some additional research, looking at some things. Basically, what this boils down to is, there is an ordinance dating back to 2004, I believe, that required contractors in Fairhope to have signage on their vehicle identifying who they are. For whatever reason, and I, and I think a lot of it had to do with, with manpower and the ability to do it, that ordinance had not really been enforced, uh, very strenuously until this past year. I know we added, within the last 12 months, we added a second code enforcement person, and this is one of the things that they have been hitting on. It's, it's caused some, some concerns on the part of some of the contractors, uh, in terms of what kind of signs do they have to have, what are they required to do? There's been some, uh, discussion about what constitutes a work vehicle. We have some folks that, you know, have been identified, their personal vehicles have been tagged as needing, uh, identification. So, one of the things I did was I, I called to, we have basically five state licensing boards, home builders, general contractors, electricians, plumbers, and gas fitters. Those are the five boards. I contacted all five of them. The plumbers and gas fitters board and the HVAC mechanical contractors boards require their license holders to have signage on their vehicle identifying the business and listing their state license number. So, every plumber or AC contractor that you see will have vehicles that will have that, and I've got a, um, this, the second page in here is a copy of their, that's listed in their legislation. Uh, the same thing with the plumbers and gas fitters. They require it as well, there's an email from the plumbers and gas fitters board. None of the other licensing boards require it. I also contacted the City of Auburn, because we deal with a lot of contractors, a couple of them have done business in Auburn. I know, talking with, with Buford King, some of the ways they handle it, they do a licensing sticker. And what I gave you, the sticker I gave you is for scale, to kind of let you know what we're, what we're looking at. I made a, a copy of kind of what we were thinking of, is a sticker that we can issue to our contractors. One of the reasons for the, the signage requirement is so that our code enforcement people can call to revenue and say, "Hey, XYZ contractors working at this site, do they have a business license?" What Auburn does, and what I would ask that we be allowed to do, is to issue license stickers for a calendar year to the contractors when they renew their licenses. I've spoken to Jennifer Olmstead with the Revenue Department, and that's something that can be done, and that way, we don't even have to stop and ask. If we drive past a job site and we see a vehicle, that sticker will either be in the back window or on the bumper. It's fairly unobtrusive, it's not gaudy, it's just something that identifies that, yes, this contractor working in the city has a license with the city. If we drive by and we see a vehicle that has equipment in it and there is no sticker, then we stop. We find out, who are you? Are you licensed to be doing what you're doing? That's the primary reason from our end, and I, you know, I think I've spoken to several of you and talked to the mayor, that you might be, you would probably be very surprised how many times in the course of a month, we find projects where no permits are pulled and people are in there tearing stuff out and rebuilding stuff, and where we have contractors that come in from smaller cities in Mobile or Baldwin County to do a job, they don't get a city license, we find them, we will issue stop work order, we make them go get a license, they pay a fine for getting the license, and then they also have a, a doubled fee that's assessed when they get their permit. This would help us, because, you know, with the amount of work we've going on in town, and you guys see it every time you drive around, we have hundreds of contractors driving around the city, trying to keep up with all of them and make sure that we know who they are, where they are, and they're supposed to be doing what they're doing. This would aid us in doing that. Instead of making everybody get door signage, because I understand magnetic signs don't work on an aluminum body truck, you can't do that. We had one gentleman, uh, and I'll just say this, he actually got to the point where he took a Sharpie and marked his net, business name on the side of his vehicle, and I think it's ridiculous that he had to do that. I think it's ridiculous. So, something like this is easy to do, it's inexpensive to print the stickers, it's the same type of sticker we do for the landfill and the beach. They can be handed out, and, and speaking with Jennifer, possibly this would allow us to get coordinated and do this, starting with calendar year in January. When renewals go out, these notices go out, we will deal with the issues we're dealing with now for the remainder of this year, but put this into place, starting for January, and that way, we know, it, it's an easier way for us to keep track of what's happening.
Councilman Brown, you've kind of been the most vocal about this. What do you think?
I think it's targeting. I think there's a lot of other uses for the resources. I mean, say the, the truck is kind of concealed where he's parked, or he's backed in, the sticker's on the back, somebody's got to get out and go look. You know, I think, you know, there's a lot of people that are operating, and I think the, the guys that are operating properly are going to put the sticker on there. It's not going to keep the Joe Blow from blowing in town, not pulling a permit, trying to do a remodel.
Understood, but it also helps us more quickly identify them. It'll help us identify them. Because right now, it's a matter of Kim or Christina or one of our inspectors are out in the field. They have to stop, call in to either City Hall, or call in to the Building Department to see XYZ contractors on this site, do they have a license? Very often, I've instructed the ladies in my office, if you have someone sitting in front of you, you do not answer that phone. I don't care if it rings. If somebody has taken time out of their day to come sit in your office and talk to you and conduct business, you do not pick up a telephone. That is my instruction to them. Same thing happens at City Hall. They have people piled up at the counter, they may not be able to pick up that call, that phone call. And this happens a lot, with the amount of foot traffic going both ways. So, then we may not be able to get the answer we need.
It also protects the citizen.
And I, you know, it, we just have a lot of things happening in town. There, there, between the utility contractors, and the landscapers, and the site contractors, and the remodelers, and builders, and everything else, it is hundreds and hundreds of contractors.
So, while that, everybody that gets a business license gets a sticker to put on their car.
Well, it's, it's, contractors are the ones that are actually going home to home in the subdivisions. They're the ones that are out there, you know, this wouldn't apply to somebody that has a downtown business. They don't need a sticker, because we know. But this is, these are the folks that are mobile, that are moving from location to location, being in the neighborhoods, doing this work, which is where our focus is when we're doing inspections, or when we're going around looking at what's going on. We're driving through these neighborhoods, we're going to these job sites. This would just, I mean, it, you're correct, it is targeted to contractors, but contractors are also the ones that are, come in, do the work, slide back out, and never get a license, never get a permit. You know, you, you don't have that with a brick and mortar business, or you don't have that with other types of businesses. So, they're the ones that are transient, that, that we have the need to kind of know who they are and what they're doing.
My question, this is in lieu of the sign on the doors.
That is correct.
Will we have to change the ordinance for that?
Again, I can. I mean, I can do, yeah, I agree, I just...
Until we change that ordinance, are they still going to get fined?
Um, they have, actually, the, the decision, in, in speaking with, uh, the Planning Department, they are, in terms of fining people for not having door signage, they are not doing that at this time, and they're not writing them up. What we are doing is identifying who they are and verifying that they have a business license, which is the base reason for the whole ordinance.
See, I don't have a problem with this. I have a problem with the signing on...
No, I agree. I, I just...
And this issue that, after, when you go and get your business license, I mean, I'll give you an example, I got, I'm a contractor.
Right.
And I have a business license, and I wouldn't mind putting this on the door, but every time I got, I used to use magnetics. They blow off.
I agree. Well, and, and the idea with that is, like I showed you in the photo I took, you know...
You got that right.
Is, uh, put it on the rear bumper, the rear bumper of the rear glass of the vehicle, so as you're driving by, you can see it. And it's, it's quick and easy. Auburn does this, Orange Beach does this, for being able to get back on, on the island after a hurricane. You have to have an identification sticker to get back on the island as a resident. So, it's not unheard of, and, you know, I, my personal opinion, it's, the signs can be intrusive. This is not, in my opinion, this isn't.
Counselman Robinson, any comments? Do you want to target Robert's sticker on that?
I do.
I don't get too kind of shady characters, I don't mind being identified for problems.
I don't mind being identified either, this way.
Eric, would you require the stickers for the HVAC, uh, company vehicles, or the, I believe it was the gas fitters?
Sure, yeah, I would say yes, because, and we've had that happen, um...
Because they may not have a city license.
That's correct. We've had folks from Orange Beach come in, and they get called to do an AC repair. Somebody picks up telephone, Yellow Pages, or Google, and has them come in and do it. Well, they don't go and get a city license necessarily, and that's happened a few times. Um, I, I don't see a reason why not. They have to do it anyway because of the state. They have to have their door signage on. And a lot of contractors are going to put identification on their vehicle anyway, because that is mobile advertising. The roofing guys all have graphics on the back of their windows or on the sides of their vehicles, but this is for the folks that don't. One of the things we had, um, were... One of the things we had were kind of small operation, a framing contractor, and he employs five guys, he's got a trailer, and he's got a pickup truck. He's not necessarily going to have that. So, we could get a sticker for his vehicle, we can drive by, okay, he's got a sticker, there's a number on it, and it'll identify who that is, where we can go back and look.
I'm hearing at least three council members have said, if you would prepare a draft of that ordinance-
Yes, sir.
We've got it till January, or actually, probably, let's say until November to-
Yes, sir.
Get it enacted, if you will draft something for us.
Okay, I'll be happy to.
I just wanted to make sure, because I got a phone call-
Yes.
While I was in Connecticut, working on this church-
Yes.
That somebody got popped, had to go up there and get fined, you got fined.
Yes, sir.
And I thought that, that, I don't know, I understand what the rule is now, you know, you need to follow the rule, but the point of it is, I don't see any reason, we're getting ready to change this, why we have to start this immediately.
Well, no, and I'm not saying start it immediately. This is something, because we'd have to have stickers printed, and we've got to go and have that done.
I know.
So, there's a timeframe that goes into this. So, for the next six months, we are going to stop and talk to contractors that aren't identified, don't have identification on their vehicles, to verify that they have a license. Because they're required to have a license. But we can start this, and I've spoken to Jennifer Olmstead, and there's way, you know, we'll coordinate how to do this, but I just, you know, trying to do what we're doing, one of the things we run into is like ADR Horton or Truland Homes. They may have 10 superintendents that all drive personal vehicles, but they're toting tools and material and product back and forth. We would be willing to give them one for each of their supervisor's vehicles, because they're using it for work. But, you know, because they don't issue vehicles. The larger contractors issue company vehicles, they generally have graphics, all are. So, if that's acceptable, I'll be happy to draft something. I know we've got a little time, but that's kind of where our thinking was going, in trying to figure out a way to handle this.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilman Brown, any committee updates?
Uh, no updates.
Councilman Boone?
We have a personnel board meeting at 7:15, we're still going to meet at 7:15, but we'll be up here at 6:45. So, if you want to come at 6:45, come on with me.
Is that AM?
AM, Monday morning. Come on and drink a cup of coffee with me.
Any more reports? Councilman Robinson?
Um, yeah, the rec board met last week, and just, business as usual, but they are very excited about the possibility of getting some more recreation property.
I was there where we did.
I was there.
Were you there? Was it me and you?
Me.
I thought it was Robert and I.
I'm the one that invited you to the meeting. But, that's all I've got then.
All right. Let's see, the airport authority, we do have one item on tonight's agenda, and that is for the extending the area access road on the east side. Won't cost the city any money, 5% from the airport authority, 5% from the state of Alabama, and 90% from the FAA. And so, this would be to enter into the grant agreement with the FAA, for an amount not to exceed $566,950. I would ask you for your support of that. And the east side build out, not to build out, the east side infrastructure is all but completed, and so, but this access road will give future leaseholders, or people that may rent a hangar space, access to the actual property. There's no road that actually goes around to the far east portions of that, of those improvements. They would have to get on a ramp or a taxiway, and we don't want vehicles out there driving on that to get to their, to their hangars, and we just want airplanes on that. So, I think that's it for committee reports. Department heads, Ms. Baser? Do we have lots of fuel sales this weekend?
Yes, we do. Well, I'll start out with the golf course. Because first and foremost, they are very, very busy, having a great season, and I'm thrilled to say that one of the goals we had for the expansion was to create an atmosphere where people would want to stay, and spend time, and spend money, and they are doing that. So, we're thrilled to see that our efforts have come to fruition there. We had a very successful-
It looks very nice.
Thank you, thank you. We're really proud of it.
Councilman Brown was involved with that a good bit, you know, that too, so.
Very proud of it. And the back glass windows look great, too. Super. Everybody appreciates that. Fairhope docks, the new floating kayak launch has been installed, and it really looks super, and it makes kayaking very easy. You just put your kayak down on that, that launch area, and it's a nice steady holding area to get into, and use your paddle to pull yourself out and back in again. And I have to say, it's the talk of the town right now. People are really excited about that. We have a new commercial shrimper who moved his boat over from Dog River last week. The four Dunn's, well, we have four Dunn slips, so if you'll remember, you had approved special pricing for Dunn slips, and those are slips that have no services, and they were slips we could not use because the water was too shallow there. Four have been leased out for a two-month period at $5 a foot, so now, something that was not working is now generating some revenue for us. And we remained open, I kept the best for last, on purpose. We remained open over the holiday weekend, our normal hours. We had 96 fuel transactions, plus another five from the Freedom Boat Club, which is now over at the Fly Creek Marina. And for a total purchase of sales of almost $13,000 in the three-day weekend. So, looking good.
Thank you, Lynn.
Council members, good afternoon. Announcement for you, council, the first draft of the Reno Road corridor overlay, which will be an additional overlay district, proposed to be added to the zoning ordinance. That first draft has been prepared, and we talked, I verbalized, described it verbally for a few moments today during the director's roundtable, or earlier this afternoon. Its first rollout to the public will occur this Monday, which is the 3rd of June. Prior to the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting at 5:00 PM, we will have a work session at 4:30, and we'll roll it out to the public, actually have the document, and the actual draft document will appear in the agenda for that planning commission meeting. So, it'll be available for the public to download and review. And then, what we'll do during that 30-minute period is go through it in sufficient detail for the time, to advise the planning commission that it's available. We will not ask the planning commission to consider it at that meeting, it'll just be the initial rollout. Then bring it back to the planning commission for the July meeting, and for possible consideration, possible consideration then forward to the council.
Can we get it before then, so we can be studying it as well?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, council members, I'll be happy to send that out. And what I will do is tomorrow, I'll send you, I'll send you an Adobe PDF document of it tomorrow morning. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
I have a deck.
Okay.
Thank you, council president, council. Just a, kind of a mixed bag, good news and bad news. Go with the good news first, under kind of department head, as well as grant update. As you know, we've had some TAP grants, it's taken a little while to get to the system. One is our 2016 TAP grant, which is for the sidewalks on County Road 13 that will run from Sedgfield all the way down to the Manly, or the Fairhope Soccer Complex, and even up Manly Road. We had our pre-bid meeting today, so that's been under advertisement, and we have five plan holders so far, so that hopefully, we're getting some good vigorous bids when those come in. And our TAP 2017, which is completion of sidewalk links on Manly Road, as well as Twin Beach Road, the pre-bid meeting is tomorrow at 10 o'clock. And so, we know that we really worked hard on those five people that were there today for the pre-bid, and to make sure they come back, because this is an opportunity for us to, one, save money, for them to do better, because all of these projects are generally in the same location, they're parallel bidding, so the construction times will be the same. And my goal is, is that you should see the open bids, the second meeting of June, meaning that the contractor literally could be working after the 4th of July holiday, if we can get contracts done. And the majority of the work probably will be close to being complete with the good weather before school starts. So, that would be a good thing. The bridge over Cowpen Creek there on County Road 13 will probably be the one link that will take a little longer to get done. I know we've talked incessantly about BP Restore Act money. Just so you know, for our Bucket One project, the Working Waterfront Green Space Project, which is going to be concentrated in our shoreline around the municipal pier, we have received federal authorization. We actually have a project number now. We had a kickoff meeting yesterday. Mr. Conyers, who is the council rep on the selection committee, participated via a phone call with us, he couldn't make it in person. The RFQ and the RFP for the professional services that we have to do, has gone through that process. Purchasing is working now on the advertisement period, we, the regulations they're requiring is a full-week advertisement, so they have to get the dates and everything else, but looks like it will advertise during the month of June. And we will have those responses back at the end of June. The selection committee will have to go through the vetting process, and then, our goal is by the second meeting of July, we're presenting to you the committee's recommendations on the grant administration and the design services for that first project. So, that's exciting. And just so you know, on the actual project itself, the professional design services, the phase one is what's called a planning and feasibility phase, which means that will define the project. We'll definitely be looking to get input from y'all as well, because there's going to be decisions to be made. There is a fixed budget, you know, basically for construction, it's a little over $5 million, and that's, that's what the project's going to be, is that, and that'll get defined during that, that stage. On a little lesser good news note, as you know, we've been in play for a highway safety improvement grant for a roundabout at the north end of Section Street, where it intersects with City 104, Veterans Drive, and Senate 98. They gave us an authorization that said by latest, we would have engineering funds available on 10/1 of 2019, and no later than 10/1 of 2020 would we be approved for construction fees. I know Mr. Correll's already heard this through the NPO, there's been some clawback of federal dollars on the federal administration, so they have rescinded those dates, said at this point in time, they cannot ensure that there's funding available by those dates that they'd already committed to. They've asked us to reapply, the deadline is July of 2019, so we are going to reapply for it, and they're hoping that when the 2020 funding comes available, they can get it back in the system. But at this point in time, the funding has been rescinded. On the flower clock, and I don't know if you know this, the mechanism that we have is not Swiss, it's Belgian, okay? And the vendor who built it is elderhorsed up in the northeast. We had to take the mechanism and ship it to them. They have ordered parts that are coming from Belgium, and apparently, they're coming by a selling ship or something, because it's taking a good bit of time. But we've issued the PO for the parts, the parts are ordered. Hopefully, the mechanism will be put back together and back to us sooner than later. And it's very apparent now that we're changing out the flowers. The clock has been gorgeous this last couple of months, but there's been no moving hands on it, and we hope to get that corrected, but we're, everything's in place, we're just dependent upon the manufacturer to put it back together and get it back to us. Probably on, just do want to report to you, and I didn't see if Mr. Ellis Hollinger made it, dredge project is complete, we're in the project closeout phase of it. Did a phenomenal job, contractor did a good job. You know, the one thing that no one really anticipated was how much beach everybody was going to net out of it, that, you know, that was just a subsidiary benefit of this project, and it's just really turned out spectacular. Ms. Creach and I and Ella sat down last Thursday to get everything worked out and settle up, so we're going to get it, we're waiting on a couple of receipts from the yacht club, and we'll get our reimbursement filed with them as well. So, just a real good process. And one thing on the BP Restore Act, just understand, we are the guinea pig. We will be the first municipal grant that actually goes forward. And I know Marcus has been working with A D C and an R on what's called a sub-recipient agreement. And they're literally writing the first one, okay? And then I reckon everyone else will use what y'all create. So, hopefully, next month we'll see it, do you think?
I probably will see it, I don't know. That's your final.
Okay. So, that's coming your way, and that's basically the agreement says, hey, we're going to do this project, and they're going to reimburse us 100% for it, and all the legality that has to do on that, so-
Rachel, let me stop you there.
Yes.
How long do you think the planning and feasibility phase will take for it?
We have it in the application at six months, at the maximum. I would prefer that we can at least have the scope of the project defined, have stakeholder input, and have kind of a realistic budget based upon the grant amount within 90 days by the time we have a contract signed with whoever is the selected design team. But six months is what we have in the actual application schedule. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
The roundabout going at Twin Beach and 13, correct?
Yeah, and I think they may have got a Dear John letter last week, too, on that. I have not heard officially, but we got our official letter on this past Thursday, and, but we knew it was coming. But I think theirs got clawed back, too, but I could be wrong, I haven't, I haven't officially heard yet.
I was kind of disappointed about the intersection there at 104. I mean, that's, I notice at least once a week, you know, that's right there on my path home, and I see cars pulling off on the side of the, paying the police officers.
Crazy.
What we can do in the meantime, you know, I don't know what can be done, but I hate to hear that.
Yeah, I came back to this meeting from Mobile through that intersection, it was, it's hairy. Yes, I agree. So, you know, definitely going to put back in for it. I'd love to think that we at least get a reconsideration and the funds are available. I hope that the county's project didn't get clawed back, because theirs ranked a little higher than ours, and so that means they're in line in front of us if they're, we're waiting on money and competing for, so.
Mr. Johnson, the last meeting, I'll thank you and the mayor, I had mentioned some citizens' concerns over repairs at the pier, and I know that a lot of those have already been taken care of, and some of those are still under work, but thank you for that, and Cruz. You know, you'd go out there, I believe it was Thursday or Friday, maybe Friday last week, Friday morning, and I walked, because the first two pickets I came to were missing, and that could have been missing since, but there are two. Everything else, I believe, was fixed. I say they're working on the water, and I think some of the lights working, I don't know if they got the light working on the proceeding out there, but it was definitely progress had been made. You know, I know it can't happen overnight, but thank y'all for getting on that.
Yes, sir, and we also, as you know, the Grand Man is going on this weekend, and they heavily use that whole facility. So, we've gotten the stairs and the water taken care of, and our guys are going to go walk the pier and make sure that there's any last-minute pickets to be replaced, that that gets done, and just make sure that everything's tidy and neat for the Grand Man.
I was told that the smaller pier to the north, that the light is out at the end of that pier, I forgot, I failed to mention that at the last meeting, just totally forgot. And then, pull it up on my email, one of the, one of the piers has lights out, one of the other, I don't remember, it was Orange Street, White Street, Pier Street, one of them, you know, had lights out as well.
And just as you come up with those, send them to me, and we'll take care of them ASAP.
Yep, I'll forward you that email.
Well, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Have you got enough expenditures on tonight's agenda?
I'm sorry?
Have you got enough expenditures on tonight's agenda?
No, I don't, actually. And something has fallen through the cracks, and May 1st, we bid the Point Repair Project, which prepares us to repair offset joints in pipe, or, you know, voids in pipe that allows you to go do the cure and place pipelining. And somehow, it's fallen through the cracks and getting on the agenda, which theoretically, the bid deck was set up to be on the last council agenda, but for some reason, we missed that, and then, because we already missed it, we just kept missing it, and I don't, can't explain it to you, but I thought it was set up to be on the agenda, it's just not. It's a $250,000 contract that we set up in the bid. The bids were based on quantities of depths of cut, and different sized mains to repair, and Kevin's familiar with this reinstatement of laterals, different conflicts with de-watering, or different conflicts with existing utilities that are in the way. So, we've got a number of prices that give us an opportunity to look at specific locations when we find an offset joint, and look at those prices that we've gathered in different types of conditions, and then come up with what the price would be to have the contractor repair it, including asphalt repair. WR, yeah, WR Mitchell was the low bidder on it, and- WR, yeah, WR Mitchell was the low bidder on it, and it would be nice to be able to walk that on. It's that we anticipate spending a little bit of that money prior to the budget year, which this, before we get to the next budget, we don't really have anything for point repair in a budget. But the way we set up the contract was to spend about $250,000 a year on point repairs as needed, and it may not get to that point, but we, right now, we know we have some that were discovered at the last cycle. We had for videos of the last cured-in-place pipe contract. We've got a couple of places we found ourselves and have done some repair work, but we need, there are some other areas that are a little deeper, and we're not wanting to get down that deep and try to fix anything, so, you know, and it can wait to the next.
WR Mitchell.
WR Mitchell was the low bid, and it's the point repair contract that we bid. And I was going to try to get it to walk on. I was going to try to send everybody some information, but actually, I've been trying to get this site planned for the substation to the point where we can bid it, and I think I've got it now, where we're just lacking a few details in specification sheets, but, and I'm meeting with the geotechnical engineer out there in the morning to kind of make sure that we're on board with the retaining wall system that we're going to need for both the substation site to be levelled and to have some retainage from stormwater on the south or west corner, so. Time is getting close on that, and, you know, and I don't want to sound pessimistic, but I'm starting to wonder what's going to happen if some of these approvals don't exactly go through like I'm hoping they will. And, you know, when we've had a few arresters that have been problematic for us, and we've had one breaker and one transformer, it's on the list of things that we're going to get repaired, but, you know, when we're continuing to Band-Aid or use what we have in spare parts to fix these things, it just reminds you that time is of the essence in trying to get some of this done, and it's uncomfortable to know that people, especially this time of year, to be out of power for two or three hours. It can be an unpleasant experience, and if we're not motivated to get these things going because of those situations, I mean, we'll be ashamed of ourselves.
I'd like to add to your comment, and that is that, you know, our utilities, I mean, I've already mentioned, you know, a utility board, but even if we don't go that way, it really needs to have its own meeting, its own concentration of, you know, it's an enterprise, so it doesn't have to follow the same rules as a municipality. I mean, it has to have things done to stay in business and do service for citizens that pay for this, you know, service. So it should be treated completely differently than how we handle municipal procedure. And operating-wise, it's difficult to prolong these things the way we have been, because it's not a matter of whether or not we need to, we have to do it. I mean, you know, so that's why, you know, there are some municipalities that have, if the council is, you know, remains over the utility, it's another meeting, another location, and it's just concentrating on utilities. And I think that we should grow into that way, because when you split up the $65 million budget, I mean, it's pretty much split. Part of it's the city, half of it roughly, and then half of it's utility, but it has to be managed differently with funding and operating.
I'll give you an example. When we had the first power glitch at Fairhope Substation, Lance Junkin, the electrical engineer, happened to be in town during that event and looked at some of the conditions by which the breaker blew, and Jeremy, I mean, he could probably explain it better than I can, but anyway, we asked him to review some of the information that was on the SCADA system and make sure that when we reset this breaker, that we're not going to be causing more problems, you know, by going forward that way than doing some more precautionary work to make sure everything's in order. And then the same thing happening with the transformer at the Young Street Substation. But he sent us a bill today for, it was $2,596. And, you know, and I would never want to play games with the budget process, but it was two events, and each event was less than $2,500. And I sent the invoice forward as if we were going to pay for these out of an operations account, and there's money in that. But, you know, a pump going bad in a lift station, and to be able to order, and those pumps can be as much as $10,000. I mean, it becomes an issue when you feel like every time you turn around, you're saddled with, well, where are we going to get that from the budget? Because it's just difficult to plan every single type of outage or every single type of equipment failure or electrical failure that you can come to. I mean, it just happens.
Well, that $2,500 for the approval, it does require council approval.
Well, it's a professional service over $2,500. You know, by definition, and I'm not saying.
Okay, so that was for his evaluation of.
It's a definite, it is just, it makes me uncomfortable thinking that, you know, and we do have people that want to protect what is written in stone in terms of order, and I don't, and I certainly don't want to try to usurp any authority over all that, but it is an issue more times than not, whether or not we can get the right money and the right budget or the limit, the spending limit, or how many prices do we have to get. And not that we don't want to do those things, but to do it in a structure of two bimonthly meetings or, you know, for council approval or whatever, it's just difficult. And I'm not suggesting.
But you admit that you could have had this cured-in-place pipe to us weeks ago, but it just kept slipping your mind, right?
Well, I mean, yeah, I can take responsibility.
The $2,500 we asked to walk on tonight could have been brought even theoretically to the last council.
I take responsibility for forgetting to remind people to continue to do the job.
That's just that one time. This is just, this is day in, day out, though.
But I hear that, too. Let me get back to that cured-in-place.
But we do depend on support staff to follow up on issues that we think are taken care of.
So this cured-in-place pipe contract, and talking about walking this on tonight.
That's the point repair.
You know, it's 12 days until our next council meeting. What's the impact? I mean, were they going to be, does the existing contract end? Because I know we have.
No, no, we don't have a contract for that currently. We don't have any contract.
It's expired.
Yes.
Okay. So it's expired, and they would start in the next few days. If we pass this tonight, they're going to be curing pipe within the next 12 days.
I would have to go back and look at the timeframe that we said it would take us to award that bid, and if we go past that timeframe, which we want today, but if it's longer than 30 days, there could be some.
Right.
People that would question whether or not that was a.
Well, that's true. Then that's a good, that's a really good point, but we don't know what that is.
I do not.
Is there, is there a way to, in between now and the council meeting, to, you know, look at your.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can run back to the shot.
I want you to run back, I know if you had it on your phone, blow it up and see what that.
No, but I will run back and get that before the council meeting.
Yeah. Because we kind of made a big deal out of walking stuff on, and then it's a little bit different than having a recommendation from the personnel board. I mean, if it's something's critical, it's not likely to be turned down because it is.
Not a recommendation.
Maintenance.
Well, let me go find out, and I'll report back before the council.
You know, we don't even have a piece of paper in our hand. We don't have a bid tabulations, and we're asking to spend $250,000.
But I think that has been turned in. Has that not been turned in?
I don't know, sir.
And there is a black hole sometimes that I'm not aware of, but.
We know that happens.
And I'm not, but anyway, I'll find out. Do y'all have any other questions or anything?
Any questions for Richard?
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Chief, anything from the police department?
I have nothing.
Okay. Chief, anything from the fire department? Okay. Eric, anything else? Jeremy, I assume Richard Peterson would supersede anything you have?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's it. I miss anybody? All right. Do you have something, council member? Let's start jumping to this agenda review real quick. Mike, will you handle all the planning, or Buford, will you handle all the planning and hearings?
Yes, sir, yes, President. I will present item number five. Mike will present items six and seven.
Mike, six. You, five. Seven will be who?
Uh, Mr. Jefferson will present item seven. Mike will present that for us. And council, item 13 is a routine acceptance of publication of green right-of-ways.
Anybody has any questions on number eight? Can we ask you about that? I think we're pretty well-versed on that one, but can you address those questions if we have them? Mike or Buford?
Yes, sir, good counsel, and when we get back, I'll have a very brief comment.
You want to tell us now?
Yes, sir. I'll come to the microphone.
Good afternoon again, council members. On item number eight, what I wanted to, what I wanted to do for the council is just reiterate what we discussed earlier, that the Green Road corridor overlay is in progress, because this affects the signage ordinance. It may be necessary that once we have made progress and get ready to adopt the corridor, that we need to come back and have an additional amendment to the sign ordinance to make the two work together. It may be advantageous at this time to add some additional, to put back in place some of the restrictions for that corridor, and so I just wanted to advise the council that may be something we contemplate in the future.
Okay, we're good tonight? You feel good?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. It's the council's pleasure to proceed. I certainly, certainly understand that, and then we can readdress this after we make some more progress on the corridor.
All right. Excellent. Item number nine, and this one was inadvertently left off the last council meeting. This was the discussion that the mayor had had with each of us for the restructure of the planning department. Item 10, I've already mentioned in my comments earlier. Eleven is, we have a new treasurer, so we need to authorize signees on the accounts.
I'm not sure the personnel board looked at this.
Well, in that case.
I'm just saying that we, I wish we could be consistent.
I know, I hear you. Believe me, I thought of that, Mayor, and I can't argue with you on that.
I know we had an opportunity.
I can't argue with you on that, but I do know that you did get every council member to verbally agree to that.
I tried to do it again. It's difficult. I mean, you know, it's difficult to try to, and I'd ask everybody to call me so I could go over it, but, you know, on this case, because it made sense to y'all for the planning.
I don't know. Sometimes it just clicks for us, and sometimes it doesn't.
Right. It's really no different than what we did in the planning department. We're just trying to think about everything that we have right now, and the best that we can do within, in line with the budget that we have, and that's why I felt like both of these restructures would be good.
Okay. Number 12. Do we need to discuss that? Who, if we had questions? You hear if we have questions about that, Jim. Okay, 13 is a routine acceptance of the streets and right-of-ways. 14, I think that, you know, I can cover that. I'll tell you, council, so 14 was, is just an agreement between the City of Fairhope and Board of Education that should we have a need due to maybe emergency to move our command and control center to a hardened shelter, is that they're allowing the use of the classrooms out at the academy at the Fairhope Airport to be used by the City of Fairhope as a staging area to house up to 80 employees. So that's mighty generous of them to do that. Item 15, the monitoring of groundwater levels. If anybody has any questions, all of our, all of our people that walked out. I'm going to put, I'm going to say Richard Peterson for that. This disaster debris removable monitoring services. Richard, can we talk about that for a moment?
Which one is that?
This is, this is monitoring services, so this is not the actual removal contract.
That is correct. As you recall, FEMA encouraged quite heavily that we have a debris plan, which we got in place, and for having that accepted debris plan, we get a one-time use that our discretion is that if we have a disaster that has debris, we get an additional 5% reimbursement, so, which could take us up to 92.5% on, 92.5 cents on the dollar. But part of that was that we outsourced the actual debris monitoring to a third party, which is reimbursable at that same rate. And so this is a competitive bid that went out. Again, there's no money tied to it, because this contract would only be activated by this council if there was a disaster that had a quantity of disaster debris that would instigate it. And so this is just accepting that this is the low qualifying bidder, based upon the criteria presented, and that for the period of time of the contract, that if we have a disaster, they will provide the monitoring service.
Do we have any agreement that they will not bill us for more than what they could be reimbursed by FEMA?
Well, they would bill us for actual services rendered, okay? And then it would be reimbursed at whatever rate we're at, whether it's 87.5% or 92.5%, if we choose to use the 5% bonus option for the next disaster.
Okay. So we would still have that match?
We always have a match, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
All right. I was joking with Richard Peterson earlier. We have item 17, 18, and 19, some substantial expenses for substation circuit breakers, regulators, and then the lift station rehab on Fells Avenue, $561,000. I'm assuming, if you have any questions, we can ask Richard Peterson about those. Jeremy, can you answer those? Which ones of those?
So did they?
I think they won't.
No, no, no. I just asked. No, 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 that's okay.
There we go.
Okay. And for the lift station, that would be Mr. Peterson? Pickleball courts, Tom?
Yes, sir.
We've got a few minutes. You want to come give us a quick brief on these?
It's basically one full-size tennis court, and we'll put four pickleball courts with the shaded areas for pickleball, and then also there'll be lines for ten youth tennis to play on those same four courts.
Does a tennis court typically cost $76,000?
When we got a budgetary price about a year ago, leading up, well, it was probably about this month or next month, a year ago, we were looking at just building the, just building the court itself, and then coming back in next year's budget and asking for fencing and lighting, and because we, that, this kind of came in at the last minute. We felt the need to do the pickleball courts and youth court, I should say, more than resurfacing the hard courts that we have now. We thought we could, you know, get another year or so out of it, but the need for the youth courts and pickleball courts was more pressing. So we kind of suck it, you know, slid it in here at the last minute. But, you know, we got a pretty good budgetary quote of doing that for $50,000, but you can see. can see that, you know, when the, the base bid came in, you know, the lowest bid was at 67.5, so it's quite a bit more than we had anticipated. But then again, we only had, had two bidders.
Does that include lights, then?
No, no.
No lights?
The base bid is just for the courts and the painting and the shading of them and lines, and then with the alternate bid added on, you're looking at 76.4 for the, to have fence around it. Lighting, there again, we were going to look at, give the electric department, and because the existing hard courts still have the old stadium-type lighting versus the new play courts have the new Musco brand lighting on them, which is a.
How many courts is it? Just courts is important.
It's one full-size court, but it's going to be four pickleball slash youth courts. They could be dual-use, dual-purpose.
Four courts.
But it's one full-size court, but there'll be four.
And what's the surface, again?
It's asphalt with a rubber coating, yeah, just like what our existing hard courts are now.
All right, okay. Any questions for Tom?
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you. Purchase for the water department for a generator set. Who would discuss that? Who would discuss an item on the water department tonight?
Sir, Richard.
Richard, you mean? I don't think so.
I know, I'll back there to get that email.
Yeah, that's what he's doing, yeah. The upstairs, stage lighting. Is that a budgeted item again? 23. I'm sure that's, 23's budgeted. Somebody follow me on this. Those are all budgeted, I'm sure they are, right? 23 is not.
Uh-uh.
I think that was a wreck.
Yeah, but we're going to get.
$19,000 was due.
Okay. All right, so.
It's $23,000.
23. 23, 24 total, including the equipment, about $24,000. No replacement cost on that, huh? All right, 24. Are you prepared to answer any questions on that?
Sure.
So it says that the. So we have any demand? Is that, is only a computer?
Yep.
It might be a computer, I don't.
Just show $70,000 each school.
I got you. Oh, they split it equally this year, huh?
They did last year, too.
Was that, was it pretty similar for the exact same coaches? They made, they had huge improvements for it.
Right.
Okay, all right. Can we explain all of that? Lisa, Lisa, will you give her a shot, Lisa? Okay. 26, we can cover. 27. 28, 29, we, a lot of fun. All right, any questions, Council? Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn.